Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Do we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim has it today.
Is this the cutest little thing? He is like six months old, maybe, close to a year? Two years old? Oh, well, our dog warden doesn't know how old he is, but I guess he's like two years old. He's very calm, very sweet. I've had Chihuahuas all my life, and my first Chihuahua, I couldn't even touch it. It was so mean. All it did is growl and bite me, but Chihuahuas have come a long way, as you can see. So come down to our dog kennel. We have large dogs, small dogs. I know if you watched the Commissioners' meeting last week, Ted had a big Rottweiler. So we have all varieties. They make great pets. Come down and pick one out. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our November 2nd meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for the day, people may doubt what you say, but they believe what you do.
First up is, I believe Commissioner Blair has the proclamation for...
I have a proclamation honoring the 50th anniversary of the Midview Women's Club. I would like to read it to you, and then I will present it to Ann Bitner, who will then tell us a little about the Memorial Forest and Shrine in Loudenville. The proclamation says, "Whereas the Midview Women's Club was founded in 1955 and federated in 1956, whereas the club supports four scholarships in addition to their contribution to many OFWC scholarship funds, and whereas the Midview Women's Club has received many awards through the years, such as the Candlelight Award from OFWC for outstanding work in public relations and communications, Community Improvement Project for the Latch Key booklet, and recognition by the Board of Mental Health, by the Lorraine County Blood Bank, and by Grafton Mayor Sherry Chapansky and Lorraine County Commissioner Betty Blair for 50 years of service to the Midview community, and whereas they facilitated the Latch Key program, Books for Grafton, Illinois, and the Golden Buckeye sign-ups initiated blood drives at local festivals, a Katrina project, children's activities at community events, Grafton Golden Getaways, monthly retreats, excuse me, monthly treats at Liberty Lane, and whereas in addition to short-term projects, they include hosted Midview PTA workshop, homework without tears, sponsored candidate nights for election, collaborated to build a memorial brick walkway in Water Tower Park, donated children's books to the Grafton Public Library, and to establish a mother-baby library for grads program at Midview High School, and participated in the International Save the Children's Project. Now, therefore, we, the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners hereby commend the Midview Women's Club for their commitment to their community and unfailing dedication to its best interests. As they turn the corner on half-century of service, the Board wishes them another 50 years as productive and rewarding. I'd just like to comment that this is a group of 15 ladies. And earlier this week, they sponsored a luncheon for all the candidates running for election. Not only did they feed us, they helped to educate us, and it was wonderful. So I'd like to commend Ann Bitner, who's one of them, and give this to you, Ann. And then if you'd like to come over to the microphone here, you can talk about the Loudenville project.
But he told us in the beginning, huh, Lauren?
Right.
That's right. We follow orders up here.
Well, we of Women's Club, Midview Women's Club, would like to thank you for this proclamation. And I've been a member of the club for 25 years, and I love it. And I'm president for the next two.
God bless you.
The Memorial Shrine, a lot of people do not know about it. It is down in Loudenville, in Mohegan Forest. The Ohio Federation and the General Federation Women's Club, they built it and dedicated it in 1947. And it is all built with Ohio products, the stone, the wood, the paint, everything. And inside this building, which is open to the public all year long, free, is books that have every name of every Ohio veteran that was killed from World War II up to the present Iraq war. And it is beautiful. You walk into this shrine, and you could just feel the love, the courage, the peace that these men and women gave for us, for our country. And the forest, the state parks, they take care of the outside. Now, we had some real bad damage a couple of years ago. And in 1957, we completely revamped it because slates were off and the doors got damaged and all kinds of stuff with the wind and snowstorm in 1991. But then we got it started, and we redone it in 1997. And you just have to go there. And what we're trying to do is promote a memorial walkway of bricks, on the east side coming up to the shrine, on the west side going up to the shrine. This can be for a veteran. This can be for somebody you love. This is somebody you can honor. We're going to put a brick in to celebrate our 50 years. And it's quite a coup, because when I joined the club, we had maybe 35 members. And now we're down to 15, because, you know, they get older and people move and stuff like that. And we're trying to get more young people in it. But the people we have, the women we have, are fantastic. And if you get a chance to visit this shrine, you will know what I am talking about, because it just awes you and gives you peace when you walk in. And I sent all this information to every VFW, every American Legion, every AMVETS in the area, to the papers and to the TV, and we are getting responses. And I'm very happy about the situation. So maybe through this, more people will know about the shrine and get a chance to go down and see what we do. And the brick walkway, we'll take your money and put your name in, so we can get it going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Well, I guess next is Robin Jones, 911.
Good morning, Robin.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to update on wireless. I'm pleased to announce that in Lorraine County, we now have Phase 1 for cellular 911 callers. Phase 1, which gives us the wireless company name, the tower site location, and the cellular callback number, has been completed by Altel Wireless, Verizon Wireless, Sprint, Nextel, and T-Mobile. Singular wireless and REVO are in the process of being testing, and I expect these to be Phase 1 within the next few weeks. Our alley controllers are being installed this week. The alley controllers actually will give us the format needed for our X-Y coordinate fields that is needed for Phase 2. The equipment for our mapping and GIS is in the process of being shipped. A conference call concerning this process and installation will be within the next couple of weeks. There is a 60- to 90-day turnaround for conversion of information. And as soon as I know this information, we will have the ability then to plan and send out Phase 2 letters. Sorry, I'm nervous. Phase 2 will give us the location of the cellular caller using the X-Y coordinates. At this time, the State Treasurer's Government Assistance Fund for Wireless, E911, has made three deposits to our wireless account of approximately $590,000. This will ensure we have the ability to implement wireless 911 service for Lorraine County. At this time, 60% of our calls are now coming from cellular callers. And at this point, we're working hard to ensure we have the ability to send help for those callers.
Very good.
Thank you.
So the money that the customers are being charged on their bill went into that fund, and now they've given us that money back, so it's a wash. We're not really paying for that out of the county's coffers.
No, we should be able to implement wireless without actually at this point...
We have some additional funds coming, too. We're still eligible for additional funding.
Yes, yes, we are. This is what we have received up to this date.
And we anticipate how much being returned to Lorraine County?
Approximately $1.5...
$1.5 million. And I understand that the carriers are now lobbying to make that a permanent...
Yes, they are.
...excise tax or fee onto the phone, so that we can have a continued revenue stream to update the systems and keep them updated. It's very high-tech equipment that's being used, so it's very expensive to maintain it. One of the concerns is, give us money to buy it, but where's the money to maintain it and continue to improve it as technology changes? So there's a lot underway at the state, and you're involved in that. You're doing a great job.
Right. Well, the .32 is only for three years. So what we can collect in three years, that's it. It ends. Of course, you know, the 911 agency doesn't quit answering 911 calls in three years. So after that point, there needs to be something. So they are lobbying really hard at this point to go ahead and extend that .32, because there is always going to be maintenance and upgrades and tariffs.
With soon with the board, I'll be bringing you some information with Ms. Jones, because I think that we need to decide where we want to be at as a county on that position, because this could end up being another unfunded mandate onto the county if we're not getting support from Columbus one way or another to maintain that equipment. We were mandated to do it, and it needed to be done, and it's necessary to be done. But of course, the downstream costs are going to be significant. We spend a lot of money on maintenance down at 911, and every couple of years, we have to do the technology upgrades. So I'm not completely sure that we have the ability to continue to fund this wireless equipment without some assistance. But we're making great progress. You're doing a great job down there, Robin. Real proud of you.
And we expect to probably be Phase 2 by hopefully June of 2007.
And then the next phase will be, right now, we have X-Y coordinate, and then we'll have an X-Y-Z coordinate, which will let us know how high or how low the person is.
And actually, the format that we're now seeing does have X-Y and Z.
Very good.
So, yeah, it's really nice. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
You got through it, didn't you? You got through it?
Yes, I got through it.
Nice job, Robin.
She does great work. Okay, down to resolutions.
We have a presentation today. I guess Mr. Twining's going to do it for Blue Star Recycling.
We have a bit of an unannounced, it's not on our agenda, but some very positive news for Lorraine County. And I think Mr. Twining and Mr. Billman are going to bring that forward if I can act as a patient to the board.
If we could ask Ted Altonfeldt and Bill Ivansik to come up. They're with Blue Star Recycling. Not too long ago, the Commissioners approved the recycling grant for a company, for a piece of equipment that they're purchasing on behalf of the Solid Waste Department, the Board of Commissioners, and our department. Today, we want to present them with a check.
Uh-huh, good.
Commissioners, would you step down and join them?
Turn it over, Ron.
I want you guys, would you please step down for a picture? You don't get to keep the big... No, you don't get to keep that. Commissioners, this is the second time that we've been able to use the Recycling Revolving Loan Fund to further economic development in Lorraine County. I think that's pretty accurate, right, Ron? I don't think anybody else in the state has a program like this. This was cutting-edge, originated by the Board of Commissioners here to more link solid waste with economic development initiatives. And people around the state are keeping an eye on what we're doing here. So the more success we have, I think the more you're going to see some of the solid waste dollars being used to generate additional businesses and jobs, not just in Lorraine County, but in the state of Ohio. So I want to commend Mr. Billman and Mr. Twining. It hasn't always been an easy task with the Solid Waste Advisory Board to have this program. And we've had to fight mightily to fund and keep this program, as this board is well aware. So I commend you for supporting us, and the Commissioners for having vision and insight into thinking more progressively with these issues. Thank you.
I think, Jim, this is our government, it's an opportunity to help our local businesses be more competitive. So again, thank you to Ron and Dan for what they've done so far. As you said, it's cutting-edge in the state of Ohio, and let's just keep doing that. So congratulations, guys. I'll be over to see you.
Number one, under resolutions, Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kala?
Aye.
Ms. Blair? There are no investments, appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kala?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kala?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kala?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kala?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kala?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Commissioners, I'd like to request an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today. I have a number of issues, potential purchase of property. We have a labor agreement under consideration, a number of hires and actions at the Lorraine County Job and Family Services, Golden Acres. We have a pending matter of litigation that you need to be updated on. And I'm looking through my file here. I don't want to miss anything, so Shirley doesn't give me a bad time. I think that's it for the moment. I'll correct at the end if I miss something. Thank you.
Never, never.
That's right.
Yeah, I know.
Number 11, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for food for Golden Acres and CBCF. Notice to be published in the Chronicle Telegraph on November 6th and 13th, and bids to be opened at 2:00 p.m. on November 20th in the Commissioners' Public Carrying Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kala?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for the purchase of cafeteria equipment for Lorraine County Administration Building lower level. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on November 6th and 13th and open at 2:30 on November 20th in the Commissioners' Public Carrying Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez, you want to update us on this? Because I know we thought we were going to be up and running by around this time with the cafeteria, and now we're sending it out for a rebid?
I actually thought we'd be eaten down there.
That's what I thought.
Where to begin? I'm almost without words, if you can believe that.
It is hard.
The... We've struggled with this. We worked with a company that indicated to us that they were a state-term vendor and that we would be able to design, do the layout with their assistance, and then purchase equipment off a state-term list. That was a very simple process, and it would have accelerated where we needed to be at. That didn't work out, only to come to find out that they really weren't a state-term vendor for the type of equipment we're going to use. They thought, because they had a state-term contract to sell a can of beans, that they could do anything state-term. And so that fell through. And then we revisited this issue with some other vendors that had the ability to go state-term, but they weren't able to procure all the equipment we needed. And one thing after another, after another. And then we finally decided that we just need to spec the equipment, go to bid. It just wasn't coming together the way we needed. Now, we have a nice design layout, and I sent around some stuff to the Commissioners a couple of months ago, and I'll refresh that information to you this week. It's going to be great down there. But this is, we need about $45,000 worth of equipment. We're probably going to do about $25,000 worth of building on counters. It'll be a design build, so we don't have to build it. We're getting quotes right now from some local contractors. On a design build, we'll tell them what we want, spec some materials to them, and let them come in and take care of all the actual construction, so we don't need an architect or engineer to save some money. I anticipate that coming to you in the next two weeks. The money that's going to be put into re-establishing a food service unit downstairs will be paid for through rent. I anticipate the recovery period being about three, no more than four years. And thereafter, we'll be making money for the county on this service. We just redid our vending contract, and I think everybody's quite pleased with the way the vending contract's gone. That was fits and starts, too. I mean, I was a little bit disturbed on how long it took us to rebalance the vending in the county, but I'm not hearing any more complaints. I never went a month without hearing at least two or three complaints about the previous vending services, whether it be moldy food, no food, or, you know, just simply selections that nobody found palatable. I'm not hearing that anymore. I'm hearing really positive results. So we did work to bugs at that, and we're getting a nice commissary and commission fee that's being returned to the general fund from that relationship. So this is great for this building. And I also understand that they're going to kiosk food over into the Justice Center, so we'll have the ability to subkiosk. Plus, there'll be delivery of food to the Justice Center in this building. And we'll have a swipe card system, or an accounting system, where employees can order, and then they'll have a bill that's sent to them on a recurring basis. You can even link this to a payroll deduction if we could get the cooperation of the Auditers' Office to do so, so that people's accounts can be debited. There's some really exciting concept out there. I'm sorry that we're not having Caesar salads for lunch right now. I did really, really anticipate having it that way. But I think another 90 days, we'll be seeing some real rubber hit in the road on this issue. And this is going to be like a little Brio-type arrangement downstairs. So it'll be all new, very fresh, good food. And you saw the menus. I think I routed some menus around. Did anybody see the menus?
No, we'd order it off them if we saw them.
That's why you didn't send them around.
You'd get us all excited.
We have some proposed menus, and I'll make sure that they get routed around to you. This is all still in the concept design stage. There's a lot of approvals that have to be done by this board before we're done. But I think that we need this to support the growth partnership and the business meetings that we're having here, and the sessions that we're having here in these two rooms. I'm very encouraged that people, more people are meeting in these rooms, and more people are wanting catering services for their evening meetings. And this will segue very nicely with what we're doing downstairs, so there's the ability to order and plan for a future event here in the building. So this all fits together with the Lorraine County Growth Partnership and the improvements in county services.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
Ms. Kala?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Men Resolution 0679 adopted February 2nd, authorizing the change of various Commissioner meeting minutes and times due to other obligations. We did schedule Wednesday, November 8, 2006, meeting at 9:30, but we're going to go back to our original date of Thursday, November 9, at 9:30.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
That's okay, Ms. Kala.
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve an intern to various agreements for purchase of merchandise cards for school clothes and clothing-related accessories for low-income children using TANF funds. And authorize director to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutors' approvals to form for J.C. Penney's incentive sales in Illinois in the amount not to exceed $792,675, and Target in Elaria not to exceed $792,675. And I believe Ms. Kala's here?
We have the pleasure of having the director herself for the first time in our new hearing room.
All right.
Hi, Mary Lou.
Good morning, Mary Lou.
Can you go to that one, Mary Lou, please? Thank you. That's okay.
Very nice. Thank you. I came today to address the concerns that were expressed last week. First of all, we'd like to purchase 10,500 gift cards for school-aged children. They would be ages 5 to 17, and they would be on OWF, Ohio Works First, or food stamps. So they have to be low-income. Each school-aged child would receive a $150 gift card. We'd spend approximately $1.58 million, and we earn these dollars in '04 and '05 on TANF high performance. And if we don't use them, if we don't use the dollars, they expire. The state will take them back in September of '07. The RFP was let. We received three bids. We'd like to go with Target and J.C. Penney's as our provider. They're the two providers that we used the last time that we did the same program. Your concerns last week, I guess, were who would audit the provider and ID the client. So I wanted to address those. The program would be audited by our fiscal department after the cards are distributed. We'll monitor for appropriate purchases. In addition, the cards have Lorraine County Job and Family Services on the card, and it also states on the card very clearly, "School clothes only." IDing the client is not feasible because of client confidentiality. We're not permitted to give the stores a listing of the client who, of who's eligible. And the state, a few years ago, terminated issuing ID cards to client. So there's really no way for the stores to know who's walking through the doors with the card. We really haven't had too many, when you look at the volume, the 10,000 cards, we really have had probably a handful or more complaints. It's really been very minimal. And the stores have done extensive training with their sales personnel to ensure that the cards are only used for clothes. So they're not really buying, you know, camping equipment or anything like that. Do you have any other questions?
I think we were just mainly concerned about abuse issues, people that aren't entitled to the card, using the card, people selling their cards, you know, things like that. Well, and you said they can't ID it, but the recipient's name is on the card, is it not?
No.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's not. The recipient's name is not on the card. The stores, they put our name on the card, and they put "clothes only" on the card. But food stamps, they get an ID, those cards don't have the client's names on them either. So, you know, the days of having clients identified when they go to a vendor, the state has taken a whole different look at that and said, you know, they shouldn't be treated any different than you or I when we go through the checkout counter. So that's why they've eliminated all the identifying information. Yeah.
It's too bad.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for visiting us, Mary Lou.
Yeah, thanks.
The report mentions that there, Shirley R. Johnson Oberlin, the report mentions that there are 10,500 cards given out. I assume that that is not necessarily the correct number for all the low-income children and families that we have in the county.
It's based on a food stamp and OWF payroll that we have. And when we have the ability to drill down on our computer, the numbers based on, from five to seven, those numbers are correct. 10,500 on food stamps and Medicaid, food stamps and OWF, it'd be approximately 10,500. Kids 5 to 17.
Right, so if there's four children in a household, that's four individual cards.
That's correct.
Right, so it's not...
No, all I was trying to get at was, for my, for general information, is how many children or families are on, in that category in the county? And I would assume that not necess, that some of them perhaps do not apply for these cards. So there may be even more such people, but we just don't have a record of them for this program.
Right. On OWF, there are approximately 2,000 cases. And on, that would be grandparents raising grandchildren or children living with a parent. That's households. That's not children. 2,000 households. And on food stamps, there are probably about 24,000 households. But we're only focusing on the children. Okay?
The other question that I'm not sure was answered completely was what happened, since there's no personal identification, and I agree with respecting the privacy rights of people, there's no personal identification... of people, and there's no personal identification on these cards, if they're lost, or somebody else picks them up, how do you know about that?
We don't.
Only if they turn them in to us would we know. There's no way for us to know if it gets lost. Okay.
Mary Lou, is there an identification in case someone loses one and they call then Job and Family Services, "I've lost my clothing card"? Is there a shutdown system, or, it's got to have some type of strip on it?
Well, no, the only thing that we're able to do is if the client moves and the mail comes back, the cards will come back to us and we'll redirect them to the client. If the client says that they didn't get them, and we overlooked them, somehow the computer didn't pick up their name, we will issue them, because we will tally, you know, we'll cross-check everyone that gets a card, so they will be assured getting cards, but if cards go out and we show that they went out to that household and they were delivered and they didn't come back in the mail, we have to assume they're getting their checks, they're getting other mail, that they got their cards.
Okay.
David Ashenhurst Oberlin, I hope I'm asking a helpful question of clarification. First, does Job and Family Services get indicated on the card somewhere? Does it say you on the card?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I think that's good. And second, does it say clothing or school clothes, either in the training or in the, on the card?
Yes.
Because I think some of the questions that were asked last time about abuse would still be a concern if you could buy, you know, celebration clothes for adults when you intend these to be used for school clothes for kids.
Yeah.
Thanks.
The cards clearly state school clothes, and we have stories from those stores, because we have employees that moonlight there, and they have been very clear with their training that they are only to buy school clothes, and when the individual comes through and they have party dresses for mama, or whatever, they're told to take them back. So, yeah, I think it is working. Okay? Thank you.
Well, you've got to keep in mind, this is money from the state, we really, we have to use it or we lose it, so, and the guidelines are coming from them, so you don't really have much of a say in it, do we?
Not at all. Well, thank you for all the information.
Thanks.
There was a lot of question last week on that, Mary Lou.
Commissioners, while we were talking with Mary Lou, Commissioner Blair had to step out for a personal emergency, so in fact, well, I see her coming back now, so. I was just explaining why your chair was empty when the video came back, so welcome back.
What did you say?
I said you had a personal situation, you had to attend to.
Well, we have a wonderful fire department in Carlisle Township, so they're taking care of it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Motion to second would be ordered now, so, no, we didn't have anything on this one, I just went right to Mary Lou.
Motion to approve.
Where are you?
Give me a second. Just say second.
You can have a second.
Okay, second, Commissioner.
Anything further, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye, I guess.
We're still on where you left.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Under solid waste, approve a commissioner's grant for the city of Sheffield Lake to purchase recycled carpet that will be used in their fire department in the amount of $4,214.64.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
I mean, I do see the fire chief from Sheffield Lake here as well, so, service director.
Did you want to come up and say something about your recycled carpet?
By the letter I read, it looked like there was a serious need for it there, huh?
Yeah, worn and tattered.
Yes, there was. On behalf of the firefighters and officers of the fire department in the city of Sheffield Lake, I'd like to thank the commissioners and Mr. Billman for this grant, it'll be well-used.
Good, thank you, you're welcome.
You don't have anything to say, Bill?
No, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was Bill Gardner, the Safety Service Director.
I never thought he was without words.
Under the engineer, approve an intern to LPA safety study agreement with ODOT for CSPT safety grants in the amount of $22,150 for the sign upgrade project, and the engineer will purchase and install.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Actually, I was with Mr. Carney when he first noticed these stop signs, and what it is, is on the sides of each stop sign, they put red reflectors on, and so they're much more noticeable, so that's what this is for.
It's a great program.
It is a good program. Actually, it was at the corner of Ashland, in Ashland, and I'm not sure the two states, but they even had blinking lights on the stop sign too, it was a little bit overkill, but the red reflectors work very nicely for safety issues, I think it's a good program.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Approve an intern to engineering service agreement with Youth NICS Incorporated Cleveland in the amount of $59,815 to provide engineering services for the design of Fitz Road Bridge 0187 in Wellington Township, to be paid from the professional services account, and authorize the engineer to execute on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
There is a little bit adjustment on the next one, but we're going to go with RE Warner and Associates in Westlake, not Youth NICS, I kind of got carried away with this company, so. Approve an intern to engineering service agreement with RE Warner and Associates, Westlake, in the amount of $65,250 to provide engineering services for the design of Corey Road Bridge 0820, Wellington Township, to be paid from the professional services account, and authorize the engineer to execute on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the sheriff...
Before we move on to the sheriff, I noticed that the sanitary engineer one was removed.
Correct.
It was for Charles Acres Construction, and Mr. Twining, do we get the grant money for that, Broadway Taylor? I think I saw that we did, and I know we've been holding Mr. Acres off for a while, waiting for that.
May I? And, don't go, because you may have something to add. I pulled it from the agenda, Commissioner. I'm not, we never notified the trustees or the residents of the new funding scheme that was going to be developed to fund the sewer, and, you know, I'm just distressed that we still haven't learned our lesson from not doing that, and when I saw it on the agenda, I asked how we had communicated, how we were going to bifurcate all the funding, and what pieces were going to be put in place, and who was going to be charged what eventually, and at the end of the day, I wanted people to understand all the work that had been done, so there's no confusion. We hadn't done that. Well, the grant got approved, we slapped it on the agenda, and we went ahead again like business as usual. This is about the fifth time that I've pulled something off the agenda at the sanitary engineers department, because I haven't communicated with the residents and all the trustees there. I apologize for that, but I'm trying to keep us from getting into, you know, trouble with that, so I understand I'll have a letter on my desk for review today, you know, communicating with the residents and the trustees about the breakout of all the funding and who's responsible for what.
Are we going to have a public hearing on that to let them know, or just mailers?
Should just be a letter, I would assume.
Right, I don't think we need to have a public hearing, but we continue, and I say "we" because we're part of the process, with them, we continue to fail to notify people that things have changed, and you know from the package plans, I pulled things off and made them go back and let the residents know how we're going to do this. There's a certain mindset that when we're not doing assessments, we just do, and I don't think that that's appropriate, so they're doing a lot of work out there, and they're doing a lot of good work, but we need to continue to make sure that the communications stay open in that whether people like what we're doing or not, because sometimes we're going to do unpleasant tasks, but I have heard this board loud and clear, you do not want to have somebody come in here and say, "Nobody spoke to us," and that, "We didn't know, the trustees didn't know." And I'm doing everything I can to make sure that that improves, so I'm sorry, but I pulled it off the agenda on behalf of the board, it'll be on soon after we communicate how this is all going to be assembled.
We did a contract extension on Charles Acres, and what was that, is it in November sometime?
I believe so, and, well, if we have to do another extension, you have to do another extension. I do not want the board to have to face a township trustee or a resident that says that they weren't communicated with. Well, you may have to face them because they still disagree with what you're doing, but not that they haven't been communicated with. So, we need another extension, we'll get it, and if we need to go back and bid, then we'll go back and bid. We've known this is going on for a while, we knew how much CDBG money we were applying for, these things could have been structured and sent out long ago, we were pretty confident that we were going to get the CDBG funding, we were waiting, we knew we were getting the CDBG money, we were simply waiting on the letter saying, "It's approved..."
Ready to proceed.
"...so that we could go ahead and award contract." It was a foregone conclusion, we were going through the bureaucratic process to dot the i's and cross the t's. These letters should have went out weeks ago.
Right.
Sorry.
Commissioner, to add to your question, yeah, Friday we received the last green light to go ahead with the program, it was the release of funds for the CDBG FYO6, the Department of Development moved that ahead by 60 days in order to grant that, to not hold up the sewer project, but honestly, from my perspective and the Department of Development, we've worked with Karen Davis and Lisa Holbert in the budgeting department, we need to have accounts numbers established in order to issue the notice to proceed, and frankly, we haven't requested those or set those up, so to issue a notice to proceed today would have been without the appropriate paperwork we need for the Department of Development.
We're struggling with our, the way we're doing business, we have been struggling for a while, and Ms. Holbert, Lisa, our budget director and I have had multiple talks, and we've restructured how we're going to do these things, and we're bringing a little bit of order out of the chaos, so that we systematically know exactly what we have. We were, it was the same thing when we were issuing notes for the construction, and I spoke with her, and I said, "Well, where is the revenue stream, where's, how is the debt service going to be paid?", and I think her response was, "I don't know." And I said, "Well, I don't know isn't the answer, so we need to go back and make sure", we just need a little bit more process, not a burdensome process, but a process that systematically allows us to achieve success and not have to go back and make apologies for things we failed to do. So, I appreciate the tolerance of the board, and we'll continue to try to improve ourselves.
No, I'm glad we're keeping the communication open, it's very important to do that, so I'm glad you took it off.
Under the sheriff, approve an intern to contract with OSSI Sun Guard Computer for the Cruisers' computers at a cost total amount now to exceed $195,350.20. This cost of purchasing installing computers will come from a federal government grant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Sheriff, did you want to comment on this at all? We love grants, don't we?
Morning, Commissioners, everybody. Obviously, you know this is a federal grant, and I would like to thank Congresswoman Marcy Capter, and also Congressman Sherrod Brown, for getting this $300,000 grant for us back to Lorraine County. It's very important that the money come back to Lorraine County, as we all know that. I'd also like to thank Captain Rich Resendez, who spearheaded these mobile data terminals program. We're probably going to be able to outfit about 20 Cruisers with these things, and, you know, as you know, Lorraine and Elyria has this, and it gives the officers access to driver's license information, people that are in jail, warrants, so it's really going to be a great tool for everybody. I'd also like to thank the purchasing director, Yvonne, for helping us out with this too, and Sergeant Tony Sorowski, and our IT guy, Jason Perkins, but it's a good program, and this is actually for the software, as you know, that's probably one of the most expensive components that you can get, and the reason we're going with OSSI is obviously they have our records management system, our jail management system, and our computer aided dispatch right now, so this kind of all fits in together with everything, so I appreciate your passing.
When do you ever anticipate a GPS system with each officer and their Cruisers?
Yes, this will be with it, it's called an AVL, Automatic Vehicle Locator, we will actually know where each officer is at, yes, it'll light up on the board.
That's great.
It's a great safety concern for us, so, because sometimes they have to get out of the car, like right now, if somebody takes off running, and, you know, it's hard sometimes to communicate with them, so this will really help us when we know exactly where they're at.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair. Aye.
And instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the mobile computer hardware installation, a monthly seller fee for this sheriff's office, notice will be published in the Chronicle of Telgamer November 13th and 20th, and open on November 27th at 2:00 p.m. with Commissioner Spallicar.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez County Administrator?
Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioners, on launching your record center last night, it was a great evening. Commissioner Kokoski, I know you were ill, you couldn't join us last night, but I think it went well, and the building looked beautiful with the lighting and the help from the seniors in putting out the bags with the candles and so forth, so congratulations on that. Recently, there's been a lot of letters to the editor concerning a lot of political issues within Lorraine County, and while I don't normally bring up things that are political here, I do get concerned when information that is reported in a political environment is inaccurate, and tends to diminish the overall effectiveness and the good work being done by the county, the commissioners as a board and as a complete body, governing body, and by the Community and Development Department, and recently, some information on economic development was written in a letter to the editor that was so misleading, so distorted, so bad, that I feel compelled here in this hearing room to have Mr. Twining report back on the last three or four years of economic development initiatives by Lorraine County. It's sad when somebody has to misstate and misrepresent facts for political gain. I'm not going to go into who, what, where, it's not important, but I want Mr. Twining to give some statistical facts, if it's allowable by the board to do so.
Sure, let's get it straight.
Ron?
Thank you, Commissioners. In 2002, the, I should back up and say, in the letter, they cited numbers from the A Source, 2005 Source, going back to the year 2002, 2003, and 2005, for some particular reason, the letter skipped the year 2004, so I've gone back and looked at the actual numbers that the county has spent since 2002, when those numbers are readily available. This letter was in yesterday's newspaper, so there wasn't a lot of time spent to get those, but if anybody should desire its public record, we can go back on all issues. In 2002, the county's Economic Development Department, a general fund budgeted item, 2002 actual budget was $1,150,643, our actual expenditure was $912,152.81. In 2003, the actual budget was $878,541, the actual expenditure was $639,703.93. 2004, missing in the letter, the actual budget approved by the commissioners is $1,129,861, 2005, actual budget, $1,165,867, the actual expenditure, $1,111,438.15. In 2005, the Economic Development Department, in conjunction with Board of Commissioners and our County Port Authority, worked with 24 different companies, resulting in a total impact of 600, I'm sorry, 565 new jobs being created with a private sector investment. Government doesn't create jobs, we incentivize jobs to be created by the private sector. The private sector investment was $93,900.8, I'm sorry, $93,908.50. Missing from the article was an acknowledgement that in the Main Street program, the Board of County Commissioners provide operating grants to support the traditional downtowns of Elyria, Lorraine, Oberlin, Wellington, and Amherst. This annual appropriation and expenditure is $100,000 or $20,000 to each of those communities, and this has occurred for the last five years, certainly covering the period in the letter. Tax abatement, now, tax abatement is a little bit more difficult to report on, but we review the tax abatements and issue new ones, and those are for five years, seven years, 10 years, so the amount that we're accounting for during 2004 and 2005 is what we're reporting. The commissioners, working with local communities and school districts, accounted for tax abatement that provided an incentive to private investment of $97,580,87 in real property, and $1,742,473 in personal property tax, retaining 3,191 jobs for Lorraine County. In 2005, the commissioners accounted for tax abatement in the amount of $78,148,33 in real... of $78,148,033 in real estate investment, $224,840,602 in personal property investment while retaining 3,789 jobs. By a vote of two to one some time ago, but again in this time period, the Commissioners agreed to spend $385,000 annually for the Glide operation. That was five years ago, and that was a different Board, so Commissioner Blair was the second and deciding vote to award that money that clearly was not included in that letter. That's an issue that, to date, is still being provided by the Commissioners as the end of a five-year commitment. Manufacturing Council, funded by Lorraine County Commissioners, to fund the Lorraine County Manufacturing Council, was approved late in two thousand and four, with funding to be provided in two thousand and five, which was completed at a total of $80,000, and it was contributed by the Board of Commissioners. I will note as a personal note, even though County Administrator didn't, the letter was written by the recipient of this $80,000. So he knows his numbers are wrong. Since two thousand and one, nine thousand seven hundred new homes have been built in Lorraine County due to the availability of land, infrastructure, and a relatively low tax structure. These investments were a result of the county undertaking the countywide land use plan led by Commissioner Blair and the County Commissioners at that time. Discussions started in nineteen ninety-eight, resulting in the printing of the report in the year two thousand. By two thousand and one, we saw an increase in developers in residential development by builders, increasing largely, in my opinion, because the word was starting to get out at the amenities Lorraine County had to offer. Industrial revenue bonds, in two thousand and two, the Commissioners approved industrial revenue bonds for community healthcare partners valued at $330 million. No bonds were issued in two thousand and three. In two thousand and four, 5.5 million in bonds were sold to assist bearings technology. In two thousand and five, Elyria Memorial Hospital sold 45,700,000 in industrial revenue bonds through Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. The bonds were to improve not only statewide, but also here in Lorraine County, create jobs at Elyria Memorial, and was used to build, among other places, the Ireland Cancer Center. In nineteen, or in two thousand and six, we have already sold $455,000, $1,175,000 in bond projects. The Commissioners have spent $100,000 annually to market Lorraine County that was not addressed or acknowledged in the letter. That has taken place since two thousand and two. The Community Development Block Grant for Economic Development are administered through the Board of County Commissioners, through the Community Development Department. Our formula grant amounts between, in that time period, $409,000 to as much as $480,000 annually for small cities formula. That does not include the large cities of Elyria and Lorraine. The funds are used to assist homeless shelters, senior citizens, as well as low-income homeowners. In two thousand and two, we have, or since two thousand and two, we have received dollars for infrastructure improvements to help attract and enable new businesses. Two weeks ago, we talked about the La Grange Opportunity Way and the lady that's been able to relocate out there. You put the roads in, you helped put the infrastructure in for those communities and that business to locate, and she received an award from the Governor. I have not even mentioned in my comments today or this letter that will be forwarded to the Morning Journal, the fact that since nineteen ninety-eight, we have authorized an increase in, I'm talking about the Commissioners, have authorized an increase in the Economic Development staff from one part-time person at that point, to where we have seven full-time people and other support staff to assist them. The benefits of spending $45 million to build a justice center with a local preference resolution creating jobs, the creation of the Lorraine County Port Authority, the establishment of the recycling revolving loan fund, or grants to the historical groups within the county that benefit residents and companies in Lorraine County. These are accurate numbers available through the county financial records. I think I probably should not read that last sentence.
Well, Commissioners, clearly, while sometimes the data gets a little dry, I would hope that both the Chronicle and the Journal will take a look at what their practice has been in putting these letters out there that do not even come close.
You didn't, you didn't state what the numbers were that he had written in the paper. They were like fifteen dollars or something.
Yeah, it was like twelve hundred dollars in one year.
In one year, I think it was two thousand three hundred. Another year, he was closer, but he didn't even cover the cost of the General Fund Department under the Board of Commissioners, I mean, the million dollars.
It was just completely irresponsible to write that letter. It was irresponsible to have it printed because it was so far from being accurate. Anybody with any common sense would have known that. Ron hit on the historical society. That is an economic development initiative. It may not appear that way, but when we have places and destinations for people to come here, that generates income in the community. So that has been an economic development project, the Glide project. We were just recently able to go down to the state and gain matching money from the state, so we brought back an additional $250,000 to the Glide project. I will tell you, without the Commissioners' support to Glide, that additional $250,000 from the state would not materialize, it would not be here. We also have supported the Chamber for a number of years, upward of about $100,000. We reduced them last year to $50,000. They're a key integral partner to the Lorraine County Growth Partnership on the fifth floor. You've been very generous with them and the things they do in the community. The Team Lorraine County, you have committed $50,000 in cash, $50,000 in match money for the other local communities to incentivize them to become partners in the public sector, and what we consider close to 50,000 of in-kind and housing support. This person knows all of this. No way, no how that this person doesn't know this. Repugnant, terrible conduct, and I appreciate you allowing us to put that out here today.
Ron, those numbers didn't include the $5 million of the Engineers' Office for Infrastructure Improvements for Engineering for the cities?
That's correct.
They include the $3 million line of credit we gave our Port Authority to grow, based on the Commissioners' good credit rating with Moody's and Fitch either, so you can add another $8 million to those numbers that have been here since, in the past six or nine months, we've done a loan.
Plus the original 1.5 million that was set up in two thousand and two.
Which was the advance originally.
To the Port Authority from the state.
Commissioner Blair did with the start of the Port Authority, correct, so.
And that brought a million dollars from the state as a match. So we did the one-five, and then the state gave us a million dollars. And thank you for reminding Commissioner Calhoun, because at the, we have to return interest on that million dollars for the first ten years. After the second ten years, we return only half the interest, and at the end of the twenty year period, it's a forgiveness grant. It now becomes property of the Lorraine County residents vis-à-vis the Lorraine County Port Authority. So it's a forgivable grant. Have I got the terminology correct?
I think he's just upset he didn't get a paycheck from General Fund money anywhere, myself, so.
You didn't mention, we just gave $150,000 out of our Solid Waste Department today, too. I mean, that's part of our economic development is our Solid Waste Department.
There are a lot that we, a lot of items we did not mention. The numbers were staggering by themselves, but you're right, the list goes on, and to report nothing in two thousand and four, when his organization was granted the money, and then not even cover the two thousand and five figure that covers the amount given to his organization by the Commissioners, and not catch on that there was some fallacies in the numbers in his letter. You know, we felt a need to respond, so that's why we're here.
You did a very nice job, Ron, and those are nice numbers to hear, they're staggering numbers, but we are actually working towards economic development and trying to keep jobs. As you said, we can't start up businesses, but we can sure as hell help them get there.
Commissioners, you guys at the talk in Northeast Ohio here in Lorraine County, I recently presented you an article from the Cleveland Plain Dealer that says, "Lorraine County Leadership Gets It." Right? That leadership is in this room. It's not the only leadership in Lorraine County, but it is the leadership that is pushing the initiatives like the Lorraine County Growth Partnership and all these economic development issues and the collaborations we have with key players within Lorraine County. You know, it really makes me pleased to be part of this organization when I read that and when experts come here and they look at us and they say, "We see the future, and we're already investing in it and already developing it way ahead of everybody else." And you guys are doing that. You know, you got wonderful game here in Lorraine County, and things are really happening, and it takes time. So I appreciate you listening to this. This isn't political. This is almost personal, for all the hard work that's been done here to be diminished that quickly, and for people to read that, and they will wonder about that, because we don't often get a chance to talk to them. So we needed to do this, and I appreciate your tolerance with that.
You're gonna forward that to the papers, correct, so I can have the correct figures that we've expended?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. You can give Betty a copy right now, I'm sure she'll be interested.
I think that's enough comments.
And Matt's here, too.
Matt Specter, I'm sorry, I was looking for Alex, I'm sorry, Matt.
Good to see you, Matt.
Commissioners, I think that should conclude my comments this morning.
Good, thank you.
Anything else for executive session, also Shirley and Elizabeth are aware. Any else forgotten?
No, I think I covered it all, so.
You're picking on those two ladies.
Thank you for allowing us to clear the air and present that information, Commissioners.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I would request that the Board pass a resolution approving the settlement in the case of Four Manufacturing Inc. versus GQ Contracting Company, case number O4CV139844 in the Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas, based upon the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement that I believe has been submitted to the Commissioners for review.
You want that resolution out, can we do it after executive?
At your pleasure, Commissioner. If you feel you need to discuss it further?
This is the settlement that we agreed to.
Right, I know what it is. I'm more not familiar with this, I wanna make sure.
You wanna wait?
I'd like to wait.
Okay. You're gonna try to change somebody's mind there, Ted?
Not necessarily. Just make sure we're all on the same page.
It was a two to one vote, just so everybody knows.
It's two to one, I lost, but I just wanna go over it one more time.
Then why don't we add this to our executive session schedule?
Let's pass it now, Betty.
Go ahead, you guys, you're really welcome to.
We'll wait.
Because until the settlement is passed, it's still a matter of litigation, so if you'd like to discuss it, we can add it to our executive session discussion.
Yeah, just like a couple minutes over, just to make sure I'm where I gotta be.
Commissioners, report.
I'm glad Mr. Billman's still here. I got a letter from a lady that lives in Hidden Creek Condos, and she's lived there for sixteen years, and she is begging to do the blue bag recycling program. According to this letter, she has to drive her blue bags to Amherst. The truck goes right by Hidden Creek, you know, to go to Squirrel's Nest and a couple other streets back there. Any way that we can find a way to do recycling for these people that wanna do recycling, even though it's not an apartment, similar to an apartment condominiums? Mr. Billman?
Dan Billman, Solid Waste Director for the Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
We are actually looking into that now. The apartments are really hard to get in line because there's so much contamination in the blue bags, and when contamination comes into the blue bags from the apartments, they go in the trash. So we are looking and looking with the Policy Committee to try to change some of that and maybe put a dumpster in there to see if we can correct the problems that have been there in the past. We spend a lot of money on recycling effort, and we miss a good portion of the community when we don't do the apartments and the condos and stuff. So it has to be a cooperative effort between Allied and our department to try to get it up and running. And so to answer your question real shortly, yes, we're looking at it.
It doesn't seem like it should be that hard. I mean, if there's a designated place where all the condo residents could put their blue bags, or, I mean, it doesn't have to actually go into a dumpster.
It's strictly up to the communities that, basically, the condos are in. I think the communities have to help out to some degree to educate the people to only put blue bags in one spot rather than the garbage. And once the garbage hits the pile, everything goes in the garbage, and that's what we don't want.
We've had long talks about this, Dan, the urban areas not being able to recycle at as high a percentage as the smaller communities, because you can't address in their contracts necessarily the apartments and condo associations with recycle-only containers. That'd be a City of Lorraine initiative in this case with the lady, that they would put it in their contract awkward, I would think.
That's correct, and we're talking to Allied on that subject right now, so hopefully.
So my response to her is that the Policy Committee and the Solid Waste Director are working on ways of providing this?
That is correct.
And she should pester her local officials in the City of Lorraine for it also. The lady's called.
It's a partnership that we have to have in order to make it work, but we're working on it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Especially, you know, somebody wanting to recycle, they're begging, "Please let me recycle."
She takes it down the street to Amherst to get done.
Yeah, she does. For sixteen years, she's taken it down to the City of Amherst, so. All right, that's the end of my report.
I had the opportunity last week with our county engineer and the family of Mr. and Mrs. Kalnousky, do the dedication of the Twenty First Street Underpass. It was a very nice, very quiet ceremony. As everyone remembers, it was last July, I believe, fourth weekend, that they had a tragedy down there where it flooded. Cooperative agreement between the Board of County Commissioners, the County Engineer, and the City of Lorraine to get that repaired, so that is all done now, so we don't expect any more flooding. Also, we did dedication of the Record Center last night, beautiful facility. Lynn Wallace has done some wonderful things, done a great job setting it up. They have a great staff, they've had one out sick all year, but I was talking to Tom Ivansik, who's the newest hire over there, and I sort of like, you know, he and I have a lot in common, we have two women who tell us what to do all the time, so.
And that's why you are, that's why you're operating so well.
Oh, what about your wife?
At work.
You've got three.
At work.
Have to be specific.
And my daughters.
And your daughter.
So, but it was a great ceremony, nice turnout of people, was very impressed. I made some jokes last night about Commissioner Blair and getting to see the book sheet first authored when they incorporated the county.
And eighteen hundred.
Also, don't forget to vote. Tuesday, November seventh, exercise your right, please, it's very important. There's a lot of things going on federally in the state of Ohio, and especially in Lorraine County, so I urge you to get out and vote, use that right. Thank you.
I'd just like to piggyback on Ted's remarks about the Record Center. It was really very, very nice last night, a lot of hard work by a lot of different people, but that Record Center, now, the Treasurer and the Auditor are not here, but they may hear this, but when we first talked about creating a Record Center, we had duplicate books, big books, stored in rented space, and it was not necessary to keep all that. So we worked long and hard to establish a Record Center for Lorraine County, and this is just the next phase of it, and I wanna commend Mr. Cordes and Karen Davis and all those who worked on that, and especially Lynn Wallace-Smith. She's done an excellent job for Lorraine County. She's the kind of employee that we're very proud of. She and her staff.
And a great job. Her husband and his friends with the jazz band last night was very nice.
It was, it was.
Very nice. Rob and you, Tom, you guys did a great job.
Tremendous music out there, it was a great evening for all.
And the Electrical Union and the Architects' Hufeta Sandwiches.
You know, Commissioner Blair, when you talk about the two books, I remember us drying out records, because we were taking them out of damp basements and using a blow dryer even before Lynn was here, trying to dry pages, because these books were stored in old basements around Elyria where they rented some space.
Well, I kinda thought I was telling tales outside of school, but Judy Nedwick jumped right up to the microphone, our county recorder, and she just carried on the story, so it wasn't just a story, it was actual fact.
And I remember the difficult time you had with the then Board in the early to mid nineties, when you and I tried to put monies aside to develop enough funding sources that we could have a Record Center, and we saved money for about three or four years before we were able to get enough funding in place to be able to launch that Record Center, and we started out with old wooden shelves made out of wooden pallets nailed together to hold up the books. We have a lot of before and after pictures, and I encourage people sometime to take a look at those, and that was your initiative in the nineties, and you saw it through to today, so.
As a former township clerk, who's one of the chief jobs is keeping of records, I realized how important that was, and then you multiply it by all the different county departments, and people. Funny little story, a relative was looking for a birth, no, excuse me, a marriage certificate through the probate court, and they couldn't find it, and I said to my administrative assistant, I says, "I know they got married, and they don't have the record at church." I said, "Go back and talk to those ladies." Well, they found the record. the record, and it was filed differently because of something called the bans in the Roman Catholic Church. And they ducked back in a different manner. But, we, we learned a little bit about it. But, records are very, very important, and the keeping of them is too. So, I'm very pleased that we have this facility that now has the ability to extend out in a few years. And if you haven't been down there, you need to go. It's, it's a wonderful operation for our county. Thank you.
Fourth question, Ms.?
I move the reading be waived.
Second discussion, Skoski.
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment?
Public comment? No. I move that we go into executive session as outlined by our administrator. And, I don't know, Jerry, did you have any litigation?
We're going to now.
Oh, that's right.
We're going to now.
And pending litigation.
Second.
Skoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at nine thirty at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown O'Leary. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
I'm Dick Goddard. I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There's really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. Give the Lorraine County dog kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Your best friend is waiting for you.
In seventeen eighty-seven, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In eighteen oh-three, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until eighteen ten, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in eighteen twenty-two, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial. And although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships. In eighteen oh-seven, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in eighteen oh-seven, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which twenty years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in eighteen seventy-four. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In eighteen ninety-four, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In eighteen thirteen, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by eighteen eighty known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In eighteen ten, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in eighteen thirteen, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in eighteen twenty-three, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in eighteen eleven to the Beaver Creek. By eighteen fifteen, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskiville, today the intersection of Roots Fifty-Eight and One Thirteen, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By eighteen thirty-six, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices. And in eighteen seventy-three, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In nineteen oh-nine, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In nineteen seventeen, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In eighteen fourteen, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in nineteen eleven, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in nineteen seventeen. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in eighteen fifteen and sixteen. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until eighteen twenty-four, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the eighteen twenty-two reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In eighteen sixteen, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon Ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July fourth, eighteen seventeen. The Village of Brownhelm Mills, located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow, was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossen in eighteen sixteen. Ten years later, the Rossens were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In eighteen seventy-seven, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of O'Leary Township, Carlisle was settled in eighteen sixteen by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in eighteen twenty-two, Carlisle Township became its own entity. La Porte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In eighteen forty, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over ten thousand acres of the land that would be developed into the township of O'Leary and the city, which also bears his family name. In eighteen seventeen, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the twentieth century. In eighteen twenty-two, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of O'Leary as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base, as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French General Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation and in the winter of eighteen seventeen moved from New York State to the one hundred sixty acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in eighteen twenty-seven. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in eighteen eighteen, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from eighteen seventy to nineteen hundred. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In eighteen eighteen, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by eighteen twenty-two, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In eighteen twenty-four, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township, that had been first settled in eighteen eighteen, requested detachment from Black River Township in eighteen twenty-five. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in eighteen thirty-three and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only coed, but also multiracial, and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in nineteen ninety-two, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In eighteen twenty, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of eighteen eighteen. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of eighteen twenty-five. The first religious service was held in eighteen twenty-six, and the first school was in session in the summer of eighteen twenty-nine. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of eighteen twenty, Abner Loveland Junior became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Senior had arrived, and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of eighteen twenty-three, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in eighteen thirteen, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of eighteen twelve. By eighteen twenty, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of eighteen twenty-one. By eighteen thirty-one, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporated Township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. La Grange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of eighteen twenty-five established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of eighteen twenty-six, fourteen more settlers had arrived. The name La Grange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In eighteen twenty-seven, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of La Grange. By eighteen seventy-five, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as La Grange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcox, who built the first frame house in eighteen thirty-three. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In eighteen thirty-five, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. When the first post office was established in eighteen thirty-five, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In eighteen fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its- In eighteen fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in eighteen ninety-one. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of eighteen thirty-two to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by eighteen thirty-five, the commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By eighteen eighty, close to seven hundred citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today as the home of the Rochester Historical Society. In seventeen eighty-seven, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In eighteen oh three, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until eighteen ten, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in eighteen twenty-two, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships. In eighteen oh seven, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in eighteen oh seven, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which twenty years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in eighteen seventy-four. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In eighteen ninety-four, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In eighteen thirteen, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by eighteen eighty known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In eighteen ten, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in eighteen thirteen, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in eighteen twenty-three, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in eighteen eleven to the Beaver Creek. By eighteen fifteen, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskiville, today the intersection of Roots Fifty-Eight and One Thirteen, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By eighteen thirty-six, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in eighteen seventy-three, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In nineteen oh nine, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In nineteen seventeen, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In eighteen fourteen, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in nineteen eleven, with the remainder of the township becoming the village of Avon in nineteen seventeen. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in eighteen fifteen and sixteen. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until eighteen twenty-four, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the eighteen twenty-two reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the village of Sheffield. In eighteen sixteen, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding "helm" to his family name. Like the old Saxon "ham," the suffix meant "home." The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July fourth, eighteen seventeen. The village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rawson in eighteen sixteen. Ten years later, the Rawsons were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rawsonville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In eighteen seventy-seven, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rawsonville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Illyria Township, Carlisle was settled in eighteen sixteen by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in eighteen twenty-two, Carlisle Township became its own entity. La Porte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In eighteen forty, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over ten thousand acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Illyria and the city which also bears his family name. In eighteen seventeen, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the twentieth century. In eighteen twenty-two, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Illyria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the New Nation and in the winter of eighteen Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of eighteen seventeen, moved from New York State to the one hundred sixty acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in eighteen twenty-seven. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in eighteen eighteen, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from eighteen seventy to nineteen hundred. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, The Spirit of Seventy-Six. In eighteen eighteen, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by eighteen twenty-two, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In eighteen twenty-four, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in eighteen eighteen requested detachment from Black River Township in eighteen twenty-five. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in eighteen thirty-three and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed, but also multiracial and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in nineteen ninety-two, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In eighteen twenty, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of eighteen eighteen. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of eighteen twenty-five. The first religious service was held in eighteen twenty-six, and the first school was in session in the summer of eighteen twenty-nine. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of eighteen twenty, Abner Loveland Junior became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Senior had arrived and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of eighteen twenty-three, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in eighteen thirteen, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of eighteen twelve. By eighteen twenty, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of eighteen twenty-one. By eighteen thirty-one, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporated township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. La Grange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of eighteen twenty-five, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of eighteen twenty-six, fourteen more settlers had arrived. The name La Grange, which is French for "farm," was chosen to honor French general Lafayette as it was also the name of his country estate. In eighteen twenty-seven, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of La Grange. By eighteen seventy-five, the center had grown into a village also incorporated as La Grange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock's, who built the first frame house in eighteen thirty-three. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In eighteen thirty-five, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. When the first post office was established in eighteen thirty-five, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In eighteen fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in eighteen ninety-one. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of eighteen thirty-two to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by eighteen thirty-five, the commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By eighteen eighty, close to seven hundred citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.